Colleen, you down there?
Here.
Okay, turn us on. Do we have anybody, anybody in the waiting room?
Nope, everybody's here. Christine is here, Erica, and I have Mr. Haverty and James G. Ward.
Okay. All right, that being the case, and it being a little bit after 6:30, I opened this meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board for November 10th, 2021. First, first order of business is continued discussion of the UMass West campus development and such, and with that, I think the first piece that we've got here is Nancy made some edits, proposed some edits, and I think we should probably go down them and discuss. So with that said...
And I will, I will let you know, Mr. Chair, these revisions, the revisions that Nancy worked off of were the only things that we had modified from the previous hearing was removing the term units for that clarification and then adding the parking ratios that we had discussed.
Got you. So those are, those are represented in here now?
They're not colored in red, they're accepted, only Nancy's changes are shown.
Okay, good, okay, that's probably the most useful, I think we... So, would you like to run down the different areas of change?
I can run down them. These are proposed modifications. Yes, I should do that. And basically, I went through and did it for, ran edits for clarity, readability, and in some cases, simplicity. There are a couple changes in here that are of substance, and everything else is really clarifications or verbiage changes. So in...
Gavel, sir.
Let's see, 195, the first page, establishment and applicability. Under paragraph two, I created tabulation of the articles that were being referenced and included their titles for readability and clarity. The change that's in here was to add Article Nine landscaping.
And I can just add, should we talk about them as well?
Yeah, let's do them as we, as we go.
So this will not be in compliance with all sections of landscaping, that's why we had omitted that section. So that section, Article Nine, shouldn't be in there. And then also, when we're thinking about the waivers, we can't tie them into special permit criteria. It can't be a special permit base, it has to be by right. So we just have to be careful when we're setting it out that we're not tying this into special permits, that we have the criteria set out that you want to base your waivers on, but they're not being tied into special permits. And we can go through them as we hit them, but that article, we can't comply with landscaping. This will not comply.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that explains that.
So that's out of there.
Other than that, this is the formatting changes.
Under the next section, definitions, I added dwelling units, family dwelling units as a clarification, and changed assessing to accessory thereto because it was a misspelling. Was a typo.
Is that okay with you? Okay.
Under allowed uses, I added the word dwelling before units as a clarification. Let's see, on the next page, on item number four, required minimum distance between buildings, I added a reference to criteria in 195-12A through C, multiple principal structures. These are the standard criteria for, basically for safety between buildings.
I think the 195-12AC, is that a special permit standard as well? I know that Mr. Haverty's listening, but that, we may have to, if we want specific criteria, we may have to list it.
Right.
Because I believe that section's a special permit criteria. So if the, we can pull in the criteria we want, but we should reference it in the overlay and not refer to anything that needs a special permit.
Right, understood.
All right. Paul, is, is Mr. Haverty there?
I'm here, yes.
Okay, question for you. Per the 2020 regulations, can we have no special permit conditions, provided that we have by right that meets the requirements of that, that law?
I'm sorry, Nick, can you ask that question again?
I could try, yeah. I understand that this bylaw has to meet the, the requirements of the 2020 funding regulations by right. Does that mean that we can have no excess provisions in here that are special permit, as long as the base requirements meet the by right criteria?
That, that's a fair question. I haven't looked at that issue. It's safer to make sure that we don't include any special permit requirements.
At all.
Certainly incorporate some of the provisions that allow you to impose conditions on a special permit, incorporate those into the site plan review criteria. Might be a better approach.
So my, my concern with that, Paul, is that as this was drafted, there are, there are waivers all through it with no criteria for allowing those waivers. So if it, if they were by special permit, we have a set of conditions for impacts on the town that we would evaluate it against to determine whether we would grant leniency. But the way this is written simply says you can waive it, and there's no criteria there for waiving it.
So again, I think that you can wrap the special permit criteria for granting waivers into the site plan review criteria.
So we would just, instead of referencing the section, we would just actually bring the standards in.
Okay.
And I do agree that we'd have to look at the nuances for having special permits above, but the way this is tied in, this is actually for number four in particular, you're setting a special permit standard in the site plan review by right section, so that I would think that section right off the bat would be wrong. I think we can look at doing special permit above, but not in this section. We have to, we have to take it out.
Okay.
But we can pull the waiver standards, we can pull the waiver standards from the special permit requirements.
Okay, so the way that I drafted this, Melissa, it incorporated the criteria, but not the special permit.
Right.
So it, it included the, the A through C criteria, but it did not include all of dash 12 that addressed issuing a special permit.
Right, so we'll just write it out.
So write it out.
That's safer.
It just, it is just safer that way.
Okay.
And the, the next section there, the section five, I will tell you that will be an issue because the age-restricted units are smaller.
How small are they?
The 650, 640 range. That's always been the design.
For one bedrooms?
Yes.
And then the studios are much smaller, but I'm not sure of the exact size, I'd have to get that from Mr. Hettison. But they are much smaller than 500 square feet.
Well, the studios are on our premise.
Right.
The one beds are on the choice premise.
Choices are all one bed?
Sorry, choices, yeah, and it's, there's, it's either 644 or 654 across the board, and that's why we, we propose 600 to be the minimum.
Right.
What's the size on your studios? I'm concerned about cutting our numbers in half. Okay? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at 250 for a studio unit and thinking that my art studio's over 400 square feet.
So if, if you'd allow us to circle back with you on that, I'm comfortable that 250 isn't, isn't anything that we programmed. I think we're probably in the 450 range, so we're very amenable to that. Really, it's the, the one bedrooms for choice is where we kind of, our one bedrooms are, so the Trammell Crowe residential one bedrooms are over 700 feet. It is the choice ones that would not comply with this. And so it'd be our preference to have 600 as the minimum.
And we can get you the exact numbers as well.
Yeah, I'm okay with going to 600. I'm just, it's those studios that really, really make me nervous.
Yeah.
That's just a really small space.
And the only other comment was just, we have, we need to make sure that the minimum sizes comply with DHC D requirements, so they're added properly to the, to the inventory, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a note to the board is, a studio unit still has to have a bathroom and cooking facilities in it to be considered a unit.
Yeah.
So when you start putting an enclosed bathroom and an open cooking space into 250 square feet, there's not much left.
It's, it's a fair comment, we don't have any of that size, so we're, we can circle back and shore it tomorrow.
Thank you.
If I may also ask, our, our council leader, McLean Fish, Jim Ward, is wondering, can he jump on the participate?
Sure.
Sure. Hey, has he joined?
He's, he has joined, he's been texting me, yeah.
Can call me later, man.
Just turn on his video and his, unmute himself.
Yeah, I'm, can you hear me?
I am, there you are.
Can you see me?
We can.
Yeah.
I would've come, but I figured I could, I could do it from here. Just on, a little bit on the special permit question, and I, I think that the workaround that it seems to be where we are is to basically not call the special permit, but create a, I guess a separate paragraph for waivers that would set out a criteria of how, what you would consider, and I'm guessing it's the general and public good and neighborhood and, you know, effects of the neighborhood, that kind of thing. But I, the reason, I think Melissa was correct, and Paul, the murky line between something by right and then starting to require something internal in the document, even though it's not the, the use part of it, if you start adding special permit criteria for other things that are kind of essential for the project, then you're kind of backdooring your way into creating a special permit for the use. So I, I think that the workaround that, that you all have come up with, which is to just create a criteria instead of referencing the word special permit in the section special permit, I think would, would be fine and pass muster. So that's, and then the, the comments on the unit sizes that Mark just did are, are right. We, we've got to comply with DHC D and the unit sizes. And I, I think that the way that we, we drafted the unit sizes were to allow variations in those sizes, keeping in mind that we, to get on the SHI with DHC D, we have to meet their criteria, their sizes, but to give you the option to, to grant waivers for specific issues like maybe choice or something. So that's, that's all I got for now.
Thank you much. The next section is density, and again, it simply inserts dwelling before unit. The next section is building and parking coverage, and I added only before the age restricted. And it's just a clarification.
What page do you want?
Bottom of three.
Three. Very bottom.
Just, we just, on, so on section five, just to be clear, we need to remove the section, the wording that says special permit?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, sorry, continue. Sorry, I lost my spot there.
Okay. Under density, we included, I included the clarification of dwelling units. Under building and parking coverage, I inserted the term only before age restricted. As I read through it, it struck me that a site that had multifamily but had partially age restricted would then get the reduced, the 65% coverage, and that wasn't what we intended. Under setbacks, I changed in to within as a clarification in two places. Under building height, I'll rescind that comment. Under utilities, same thing. Under open space, I did a major edit, and I edited it mostly for readability and clarifica, and clarity. I changed it from open space to recreational and open space because there was so much of it that was dealing with recreational. And the last part of it, in terms of transfer of properties, I simplified down into one sentence because it read like a lawyer.
You delawried it, but I think, I think it reads fine.
I delawried it.
And you wrote the other section in the, in the positive instead of the negative. I have to take it reading better, so.
I'd make the, no to the caveat, deed instead of dead. We don't want the project dead.
God, no. Oh, deed. So sorry. We do not want the project dead. Under parking, I rescind the special permit, and I simply moved the point nine to be properly structured sentence. Under landscaping, in both cases, I removed the consistent with the existing species on the site. Thank you. Under architectural design, I simply, I took out a bunch of, of your specifics of what you plan to provide for architecture because it doesn't belong there. If you want to put it in the agreement, that's fine, but this isn't where it belongs.
Yeah, we actually just tried to pull some standards. I think some of this was taken directly from the VCOD, so we just were trying to book it off a little bit, but that's fine, we're fine with the project.
Yeah, just make it simple.
Yeah.
And under waivers, feel free to insert them here instead of referring to the section.
Okay.
Okay? But basically, special permit criteria is the kinds of things that I believe we should be looking at.
Okay.
Okay? And that's all I have.
Now that it's delawired.
Delawired slightly. It was a great job of lawyering.
I used to have a, a term for that, was salutary dehombasification.
Dehombasification?
Dehombasification.
Yes, I believe that.
I just had one.
Send you back to your level.
Quick comment.
Go ahead, Evan.
Under architecture, section 14.
Yeah.
The current language says reflect classic New England architecture. So I believe board members have seen the proposed renderings of the architecture. Does that meet classic New England architecture? What we don't want to happen here is create language and then get into a hearing and then we're debating whether it, whether it... So, so I think you've presented renderings as to what you are proposing.
We presented, sorry to clarify, we presented renderings of private projects that are indicative of the materials and the typologies that we would utilize in this project.
Would you, would you categorize that as classic New England architecture?
It's contemporary to me.
I just want to make sure we're not, we're not creating a standard that we're not aiming towards.
I think that's real.
Yeah, we could say consistent. We can pull the, we can modify that language.
Yeah, I guess I, something about consistent with classic New England architecture might be a little broader. Because, you know...
Yeah, I don't think we want to be in a scenario where somebody says, the new classic New England architecture is brick.
Well, I mean, we, there are those of us on this board who remember the, the barn-like structure.
Yeah, and it created chaos in town.
Yes.
Serious chaos.
So we have to... Well, yeah, although, whether this looked like a barn was...
But this was a New York-based barn structure.
Kevin, are you calling the attention to this so not to make it more broader for the future, or are you making it, you want us to narrow it?
I get the impression that what they're proposing is not classic New England architecture.
I think so, either.
It's a modern take.
Yeah.
And if the word classic is in there...
I wouldn't say drop classic, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just drop classic.
I think that's fair.
That's all right?
That should do it.
I mean, what, what we don't want is Santa Fe, New Mexico.
Yeah, don't come in with stucco.
We, we already had one of those.
Seriously.
The double, the, the language that we took out, like the double hung windows and all of that, I think that ties into that New England architecture, so without that...
It will be very much akin to Bill Ricker, Rutherford Kingston, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just before we leave this agenda item, the legal ad for the zoning public hearing to open is going in this week. It will, the first, it will first run Friday, November 19th, and then again on Friday, November 26th, for the hearing to open on December 8th, your next regularly scheduled meeting. Between now and then, I will do a direct mailing to all the butters within 300 feet and likely extend that, just based upon the other public engagements that have taken place.
Do you have a location?
Can you include a direct mailing to all of the town meeting reps as well?
Yep, I can do that.
That's going to be really hard.
So, so I did speak to telemedia. Their preference is this room, just for purposes of live recording, making sure that the technology all works. If need be, we've, in the past, we have used 204 to manage some of the, some of the overflow. But I think for purposes of making sure that the audio/video meets expectations, not only for people in the room, but people at home. People may want us zoom into the hearing. We know that this room will work. We won't have any problems with telemedia staffing it, and they know the technology here.
Do you have to mention that in the legal ad, that it's going to be zoned?
No, that will be on the agenda.
Just on the agenda.
No, I'm just wondering, Dave, it's a COVID, how many people can we fit into this room?
We can fit the, the, the capacity, yeah, so there's no limitations. If it turns out that, you know, there's no expectation that, that we finish this on the 8th, if for some reason the board needs to continue or wants to continue, and it turns out that we need to continue because we just need a larger venue after the 8th, then we'll, you know, we can, we can arrange that.
All right, and I guess, I mean, it looks like we're pretty close to a final edit on this. Matter of fact, most of the items we've resolved tonight. There are a couple that are going to take tweaks of wording. I don't know, the sooner we can get that in, Evan, you can send it around.
Yeah, I would ask that they, you know, that the proponent circles back with the fin, what you think is a final working draft for next week.
Okay.
We need, we need a final, whatever we're discussing on the 8th, we basically need to have on file with the planning board and town clerk by next Friday, the 19th.
There's no meeting between, no, this meeting and December 8th?
Correct.
That's fine.
Some calamity comes up, we can always pull when there's an emergency, but let's try not to...
But it takes 48 hours to get that.
Takes 48 hours even to do that.
To schedule it.
Why, do you think we need another meeting?
No, I don't think we do.
No.
No. But this is, this is a big enough project, you have to...
Right, if we have to, we have to.
Have a fallback plan.
So I ask you again, like earlier, I'll be keeping the name. I'm not, I'm not a proponent, it was brought up early on, but it's always going to be known as UMass West in the books and everything forever. So that's just a question. I don't want to put a stumbling block in, but it was mentioned weeks ago, is this the name we're going to keep?
How long did they own it?
Is there any reason it can't simply be MFOD?
Right, if it gets approved.
Yeah, so once, let's just play this out. Once, once, once a project comes to the planning board, presumably there's an approved project that is built, I don't think people are going to continue to, Town Hall is not going to refer to it as UMass West. We're going to refer to it as, you know, Trammell Crowe, whatever you guys call it.
Do you see any other future projects trying to use this? Because I mean, this is custom...
No, it's custom for this particular property.
Okay, so you don't think it will come up?
I don't think it will be an issue.
Then, then...
I mean, it's, we're using UMass West because that's what it's, that's what the community calls it. But once something's built and it's occupied, I don't think people are going to...
If you, if you wanted to maybe make it a little less specific, you could just call it West Campus Multifamily Overlay.
Yeah, it could.
See what I mean? It's kind of, a little more generic. I don't really care.
I don't know if we have to at this point.
Based off of what Evan just said, I don't think...
Okay, never mind.
I didn't realize that.
So just final, final updates on this. The proponent is back in front of the select board this upcoming Monday. The development agreement continues to be refined. At the last select board's meeting, I think several planning board members were there. School committee weighed in, conservation weighed in, so those edits have been incorporated. The new sustainability committee has expressed an interest in meeting with the proponent. That may be in the works. The select board then meets on November 29th. Development agreement likely will show up on that agenda as well. And then on Tuesday, November 30th, at the request of both boards, the proponent has scheduled a town-wide public presentation forum. That will be at the High School Performing Arts Center at 7:00 PM. Telemedia will be there televising live with the audio/video and recording as well. I cover...
I think the only other meeting that we have scheduled is with the Housing Advisory...
Housing Advisory Board, next, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Yes.
Well, I will, I will go to the, to the select board Monday anyway. We should probably have a presence there.
You know, they had, this has even changed from, they had a smaller structure.
That would be one of my questions for the board, if they wanted to notice a, their own hearing for the November 30th meeting, if the off chance that there's four members present.
Yeah, that wouldn't hurt.
And I'll be asking this one.
Post the meeting?
Just post it, just so that if we all do decide to sit down and talk, we don't, we don't have angry natives with torches and pitchforks.
Right, and I'll be asking the selectmen the same question one night if they think that if there's not members that are going to come.
I'm, I'm certainly thinking I'm going to be there if at all possible.
Yeah, I can be there on the 30th.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if you got four of us.
Thursday's a Tuesday, right?
Yeah, it's a Tuesday.
One, one other question. One other question while we're finishing up UMass West, on this latest version of the plan, changes?
Just updates, the parking and the 20 feet of frontage, the reduction.
Got it, okay, so that's.
And that was it.
Okay.
Super.
Was the last meeting we showed the building? Did I miss that? I must have missed that.
The building.
There was two buildings, now they've become one. Was that last meeting presented? That's what Henry just mentioned.
I think that was mentioned at the select board, the last select board's meeting.
It was, it was mentioned at the select board.
That's building.
This one right here?
Building three, yeah. So. Mark, can you justify that change?
Another piece in and call it the Pentagon.
The letters have requested that we adjust that, the age restricted units away from the property line, and we did do that. I apologize, and the townhouses.
The internal building with the fire.
Yeah, and then the two, the townhouses along the road, the same way, they're adjusted off the property line a little bit closer, and then we, at that pinch point there where those two buildings were, we prop them together into one building. So those were our other changes. You're right.
Okay.
The two buildings have become one. I should have mentioned that.
Have you guys run this by the handicap people in town? They've been bored, this has been trying to get.
We actually use a separate ADA compliance consultant for all our projects.
Yeah.
So briefly, no, we've not engaged with any handicap groups or committees, but we build to the standards that we're required to.
Yeah.
Fairly stringent.
If we could take and reach out to them when we have our open meeting, just to make them feel at least that they're.
Make them feel loved.
Is it a committee per se?
Disability Commission.
Disability Commission. I think one other caveat I just put out there is at this stage with the site plan, you know, we could not really speak in any meaningful detail about.
I know, but. The way of the units. It just makes them feel involved, and the more people, and one of them is a town meeting, well, married to a town meeting rep, so hopefully.
Yeah, I'm glad you.
Yeah, I believe that's a sidebar, yeah.
Anything else?
It's just good business.
Anything else?
No, why don't I, okay, is that it for, great, see you Monday?
Yes.
Thank you.
Their meetings.
All right, thank you.
Take it.
Sorry, it's a little bit late.
Oh, no, I know what it's like out there. Okay.
Did you already read through anything?
No, we have to. No, we just started with that, so we're right at Wisteria Lane.
We all set to go? Welcome to the planning board meeting for November 10th, 2021. This meeting is being televised by Chems for Telemedia, and is being conducted in person in Room 204 of the town offices. We will continue with the Zoom component links for the public until further notice. The call-in number is 929-205-6099. Just finished up with the UMass West work session. We're now on to Wisteria Lane. Do we have any letters or anything?
We do have a letter.
Thank you.
From the Department of Public Works, subject Planning Board File 2010-04, Wisteria Lane Subdivision. Dear Members, this office has been working with the town treasurer, John Sousa, on outstanding bonds and accounts. John informed us that there is still a bank account for the Wisteria Lane subdivision that was opened back on June 20th, 2011. This account has a balance of approximately $10,021. The town has been holding this bond because the developer failed to submit the required ASBILT plans to the DPW after construction was completed. This office has requested quotes from independent land surveyors to complete the ASBILT. The lowest quote was for $3,000 from Land Engineering and Environmental Services, Inc. This office requests that the planning board vote to authorize John Sousa as the town treasurer to withdraw $3,000 for completion of the ASBILT and to release the remaining funds to the developer. If you have any questions, please contact this office at 978-250-5228. Sincerely, Christina Papadopoulos.
So I guess he didn't finish what he was supposed to, so now the town's stepping in and doing what they need to do.
What the money's for.
I'm surprised they even give him any money back if he doesn't.
My law, you have to.
You have to, yeah.
But do we have to give it back before the ASBILT is completed?
No.
Then why would we?
So why don't we?
I mean, it can be, it can, you know, you can amend the recommended motion to
Yeah.
withhold, you know.
There's got to be some sort of, right, I mean, I, well, you don't, it doesn't really matter, we want to just get it off, yeah.
The only reason I would take in, how I would word it is, they're doing the ASBILT if they find something wrong.
Yeah.
Which they shouldn't be, but.
Keep it until, just to make sure.
I would.
Yeah.
Evan, does that make sense?
I don't want to approve this until such time as the ASBILT has been completed and signed off.
So we vote then tonight to do, to give the money for the ASBILT and then wait on?
Christina wants to talk.
Christina?
May I say something?
Yes, please.
Please. Thank you. So Christina Papadopoulos, town engineer. So we do have a signed contract with Land Engineering to provide us with an ASBILT. They have already been on-site and have already done the survey work for the ASBILT. I've already received a draft of the ASBILT, and I've walked the site, and it appears that there is no additional work required other than the ASBILT, which is why I feel that it is appropriate to ask for the money to pay for the survey to be completed and the rest of the funds released to the contractor.
Got you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
You're welcome.
So basically, she feels that we're all set, then I feel comfortable supporting what she says. Is everyone else all right with that?
Yeah, I'd rather sign off the ASBILT first and then release the rest of the funds.
Rest of you guys, how do you feel?
I'm going with Christina.
Yeah.
Paul?
Yeah, I think I trust Christina's judgment.
I trust Christina.
I'm going with her professional.
All right.
I think we should.
So it sounds like the majority of us are on board with that, so if we could get a motion to authorize John Sousa treasurer to withdraw $3,000 for the completion of the ASBILT and to release the remaining funds to the developer.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second by Henry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Two, four, five, yea, one, nay.
It's just a principle.
Okay, thank you, Christina.
Yes, I definitely trust Christina.
Next up, 50 Drumhill Road, Chase Bank, will get to endorse the final plans. Do we have any letters?
We do. From the Department of Public Works, subject planning board application, 50 Drumhill Chase Bank. Dear Members, this office has reviewed the site plans by Core State Group, consisting of 17 sheets dated July 13th, 2021, revised through October 15th, 2021, and a stormwater impact analysis dated July 13th, 2021, revised October 2021. This office's concerns have been met sufficiently, and the plans have been revised accordingly. We recommend endorsement of the final plans. If you have any questions, please contact this office at 978-250-5228. Sincerely, Christina Papadopoulos.
Excellent. Does anybody else have anything?
So I've got to abstain from this vote.
Okay, Mike is going to sustain. Anybody else? Any abstain, I'm sorry. Anybody else?
You're sustainable?
Make a motion to endorse the.
Motion to endorse the final plans as presented, second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? No nays? Excellent. All right. Next up, 99 Littleton Road, endorse the final plans. Do we have any letters?
We do. From the Department of Public Works, subject planning board file 2021-05, 99 Littleton Road, final plans. Dear Members, this office has reviewed the site plans by Frederick W. Russell, P.E., dated April 7th, 2021, revised through October 30th, 2021, and a stormwater analysis dated April 7th, 2021, revised through September 30th, 2021. This office's concerns have been met sufficiently, and the plans have been revised accordingly. We recommend endorsement of the final plans. If you have any questions, please contact this office at 978-250-5228. Sincerely, Christina Papadopoulos.
Anybody have any issues? If we could get a motion to endorse the final plan and special permits as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Henry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Nine Acton was continued.
Yeah, I just need to read that letter in, please.
Letter, please.
I have a letter from Katie Enright. Evan, on behalf of John Feneros, we request a continuance of the planning board hearing scheduled for 11:10:21 for 13 Acton, AKA Nine Acton Road, without testimony. I have included the project attorney, Phil Iliopolis, and my client, John Feneros, on this email. If you have any questions, please let us know. Thank you. Katie Enright, Associate Principal Senior Civil Engineer, Howard Stein Hudson.
Excellent, thank you.
Do we need a motion to continue the public hearing?
Motion?
Second.
Second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, new business, old business, public input.
TC, so you have a hard copy of an email exchange that I had with Paul Haverty. He's perfectly fine from a legal perspective. His email does indicate a disclaimer that we, that he's recommending be placed on the agenda. So if the board's inclined, if you're, to start at your December 8th meeting, your next meeting, first item on the agenda similar to select board would be public input, and we put that disclaimer right next to it, essentially.
That is put in everyone, and then they're able to speak, but we cannot comment on anything, or we can't get into discussions, correct, right?
That's at the board's discretion. What I can tell you is, select board does not engage.
Yeah.
I didn't ask council that legal question. I think it's advised that you don't engage.
Yeah.
Take it under advisement. If there's something that you want staff to look at, look into between public input and the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the next meeting, we can put it on the agenda and update. And then he clarifies, I asked about, well, what about applicability? So for example, you know, Nine Acton Road has applicability, or other projects. So the way council outlines this is that, as long as it's not on that evening's agenda, anything can be discussed under public input. If it's on the agenda, then they, the board should tell that individual.
To wait until.
To wait until the agenda item comes up.
Anything can be discussed by them, but not, I mean, stated by them, but not by us, right?
The way Attorney Haverty seems to be describing is that if it's on the agenda that evening, it should not be brought up under public.
Okay, perfect.
You wait until the agenda.
Okay, stop them and then let them know, okay.
Cool, so let's do it.
All right, so that's great, so we'll start at our next meeting, and we're not going to be doing it quarterly, we're going to do it every meeting?
If that's what you want to do.
Is that what you guys are all in favor of, or?
Let's try it.
I don't know. I think it's going to be frustrating to people to come up and make a pitch and get no feedback, but.
But they do it now with the, with the.
Select board.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah.
I just, I just think it's going to be a frustration to them.
Do you want to try it for a little bit?
What the heck, we can try it.
We can engage if they talk about process or a question they have, right?
Yeah.
So you can ask, you can answer them, at that point.
I mean, if they're talking about a project, that's, you probably don't want to engage.
Right.
But if it's about master planning or.
We can direct them how to get the answers, or, you know.
Let's try it. Deidra has been pushing this, and it was a great idea.
I think it's a great idea.
We should continue.
And we'll make sure that this gets put in there, and we're going to continue to do how you've done it.
Yeah, we'll keep new business, old business on there.
Okay.
And then we've also added, the next agenda item is board member liaison reports and referrals. That was also agreed upon at the last meeting.
Okay, excellent. On, as far as the liaison reports, just to remember them all, can we list them or should we not?
We can list them, or people who are.
Do you want me to just go around and then bring it up?
Just go around.
Okay. Do we have any liaison reports?
Well, I can speak a little bit to the master plan, which is, I think we're going to have what we believe is our last meeting. That's next week, I think it is, isn't it?
December 2nd.
December 2nd, okay. We've crafted a letter to go with this report. The report itself is, well, you've seen it. I believe the work of that committee is essentially done, so it will come before this board, and I think what this board is being asked to do is look at it, approve it, from the point of view of it being a plan, not a, not a binding statement of what's going to be done, and then it will become the responsibility of the planning board to appoint an implementation committee, which is discussed in the letter. So I think, I think that the work of that group is essentially done. Might want to think about who you might want to put on an implementation committee. The implementation committee isn't really, that's a bit of a misnomer, it doesn't implement it. It basically goes and bugs people to say what they've been doing about it, if you follow the difference.
To provide statuses.
Would want to continue and.
I would be more than happy to do that, but I don't want to preclude anybody else.
I'm not home, Tim.
Yeah, I probably would.
I guess we're stuckies, okay.
Well, you guys know.
I mean, it'll be like.
Assuming I run again, yeah.
Well, you know, okay.
So it's likely that the, some members of the master plan committee will attend one of your meetings in December to kind of walk you through the final version, the letter, see if you have any questions. As Mike said, with the request, the board takes a formal vote to endorse or approve whoever we worded.
Accept, probably is the right word.
Accept.
December's always a rough month.
Yeah, so if it slips into January, so be it, but that's kind of where this is.
At what point do we, would the committee be formed?
You know, if you could form it at that meeting, it wouldn't be a bad thing. The cover letter to the report, I believe, details, is it the cover letter, or is it the first chapter of the report that details the composition?
The last chapter, implementation.
The last chapter. It gives you the master plan committee's concept of who you might want to put on that committee.
Consider it done.
Okay.
So that's a.
We didn't name names.
It's on our upcoming agenda.
Yeah, no worries.
Good.
All right, excellent, thank you.
And at that point, you can.
Thanks for your hard work on that. Mike, do you have an update for us?
Vinyl Square Committee is hosting a vinyl square improvement plan for the interest in the vinyl square actual traffic flow. Next Thursday night, the 18th, next Thursday?
Thursday, yep.
Thursday night, the 18th, at 6:30 in this room, and it's going to be televised. So it's a vinyl square concept plan.
It's in here?
Sent out today by Lisa Maroni to all of the contacts in the town, so.
To Gads of people.
To everybody, right. So this has been going on for a while, there's been a study that's been done, and improving the, you know, Groton Road coming into it, as well as Middlesex Street and 3A, so.
Oh, that'd be interesting.
So we want people to tune in. So that's the 18th at 6:30.
All right, thank you. Housing Advisory has been rescheduled. Paul and I are going to handle that jointly until the 16th is the new meeting. Henry?
I'm off of everything, just because.
Who's handling?
Nemcog, yeah.
Nemcog.
Nemcog.
Oh, Paul.
Honestly, we really haven't gone over much. There's a retirement party that I'm going to.
Excellent.
Not yours, bro.
I don't know these people, I haven't met these.
Oh, they're good friends.
Oh, they're great folks.
We've been dealing with them in master plan.
Yeah, a lot.
They're good people.
And they have great information, but nothing solid right now.
We'll have fun at the party, let us know how it goes.
Yeah.
All right, that's it for committees then?
No.
Nope, sorry, historical or?
No, I don't have historical anymore, Deidra does. But I do have ZBA. And I did attend this month, and most of it was, you know, just the general clearance, side, side yard clearance stuff. But there was one interesting application, and that was to request an override of the building inspector's decision that a new three-family on a single lot down on Hart Pond was not a continuation of the existing non-conforming condition that had existed there when it had several small camps on it. I did point out to them that three families, three single-family houses on a single lot constitutes a multifamily, and it requires a site plan review by the planning board. But they did back up the building inspector's finding, and at this time, unless it is challenged in court, it is on a no-go. And suppose it could be challenged, who knows?
It's possible.
Who knows? It's a, it's a messy.
Yeah. So the result was they, they deny, the result was a denial?
They upheld.
The result, they upheld the.
Determination.
And he determined?
That it was not permitted under.
It was not permitted, okay. So they upheld, they, they upheld the determination that you can't do that.
That's right.
Okay.
What about Ag Commission?
Ag Commission, yes.
Oh, yes.
Catch this, you've got two members of the Ag Commission sitting in front of you.
But Henry said he wasn't on any.
Yes, he is.
Well, I.
I resigned as chair.
Yeah, I, we, you have the chair, the vice chair here. And, and we actually are, we're proceeding in a couple of lines. First of all, we're really trying to get the Chumsford Farmers Market back in operation or something like it. And we're looking at some options. Actually, we tagged Nancy to look at some of that.
Go put a proposal together for funding.
Put a proposal together for, it's, it's really a funding issue, as much as anything else. We're, I've, we've started a, a, if you will, a census of farms in town. I mean, it's just a, it's just a spreadsheet, we're passing it around, and we'll figure out what's there. What else did we do?
Are you starting with the 48, the, they're not 48 properties, the 60, yeah.
I'm going to put, make that a separate sheet on there to show what town lands are potentially, yeah, a lot of this information exists, some of it even exists in the master plan.
No, I was, I was referring to the list of properties that have tax.
Turns out we have, most of them are on the list already.
Well, they're on the list from, in the master plan.
Yes.
Yeah, there's some, there's some people that don't want that tax exemption no matter what, too.
Well, I understand that, that, that's, the list is certainly not comprehensive of agricultural lands, but it's a starting.
Well, it's, it's information about what is potentially available.
Yeah.
For ag land. So that's what the Ag Commission is doing, it's back up and running.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. Evan, could we put together a master list of all the committees and all the members and, and?
There's one on the town website.
Is there another?
Town website.
You referring to what?
No, just for us, yeah, just on the liaison, like, just so I can, and who the backup is or whatever.
Actually, it would be helpful if it was on the agenda there.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking, but I asked that, but then we said just go around, so.
I know, but it would be helpful if it was there.
Yeah, because then we'll remember, we talked about it, because sometimes. One, one other question before we go. One other question, do we, and I don't know if I can bring this up now, but a holiday party, do we want to, I know we've had in the past, do we want to have a, plan a night to, to get together? I figured now is good enough time to plan something, I don't know if you guys are interested?
Sure, I mean.
Yeah, a holiday party or?
Yeah, I mean, this.
It ain't going to be at the Glenview.
That's the thing.
Definitely won't be, we could do it in the parking lot at the Glenview, but.
After the Ag Commission meeting, we went over by the brick house, and it was swamped.
Yeah, it was, totally swamped.
We tried calling you, of course, you never answer your cell phone.
What's the other one after the Princeton?
We went, we went to the, the pizza place, Max and Leo's.
Establishment, that's great, isn't it?
Establishment, even.
It was, it was empty this time of night.
We get pizzas.
It was great, there was cold beer, and there was, you could talk, it wasn't the.
You know something?
Where are you talking?
Max and Leo's.
Do you think it's big enough, though?
It just got sold.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
The guy's anxious.
You want to adjourn this meeting?
Yeah.
I already tried doing that.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?